Okay, I'll call the town council meeting of April 12th, '21 to order. And we've got some special guests with us today. Got some Girl Scouts with us. Would you like to introduce yourselves and tell us what troop you're with?
We're actually Cub Scouts.
Cub Scout, okay, I'm sorry, okay. Good. Eden, okay. Laurel? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Cameron.
Great, great to have you all with us. And we'll get started. And the first order of business would be the invocation. And the girls are going to lead us in the pledge. We're going to have one of them lead us in the pledge.
All right, let's pray. Dear my Father, Lord, we thank you for the such a beautiful day today and for the wonderful weekend we had. Father, we continue prayers as always for our community and our country. We ask that you please continue to keep us safe and healthy. And we pray for a wonderful meeting this evening. All these things we pray, and Jesus may. Amen.
Amen. Ladies, join us and lead us in the pledge. Oh, here's another, no question. Pledgeance in the flag. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, ladies. If they wanted to be here to see our meeting, then I'm going to meet with them after the meeting for a little while. Do a few things also. Thank you. Okay, let's get to approve the minutes. Should have received a copy of the last month's minutes.
I move to approve the March 8th, 2021 minutes as presented.
Okay, motion in second. Any comments, corrections, additions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, Rebecca Treasor's report, please.
During the month of March, I did transfer $100,000 to the operating account. Your revenue and expense report is included. We are 75% through the budget year. A few quick comments. We have received a certain amount of money from our HUR remittance. It does look like at this point, we may not reach that budget amount. I'll continue to update you as those come in. The receipts are once every two months. I do still expect we'll see an income tax surplus. This may be able to cover certain revenue deficits. We obviously know there's a few line items that we won't receive any money for in this year. It also may be enough to cover some of the expenditure accounts that we've had unanticipated over expenditures. Ultimately, I think what will happen is if budget amendments are needed, one or more of them, they won't come until June. I just want to wait as late as possible to see how we maybe make out in some of these accounts before I do those budget amendments. I'm also watching the enterprise fund. We've had some unexpected expenditures in the sewer department. The budgeted contingency amount will not cover that. We do have surplus expected in the water department, so as a fund in total. The only thing that I think may require a budget amendment is the purchase of land that we're going to make in order for the waste water treatment plant expansion project. Again, I'll wait until June to do that. Just quickly, talking about this funding that we expect for the American Rescue Plan. I ultimately will recommend that that be spent on one-time capital expenditures. Obviously, we haven't received the first payment. We don't know what the ultimate amount will be. And there also is no guidance yet from the Treasury Department as to whether that will be subject to single audit. So, single audit, if you're familiar with that, is something that is required when you receive over a certain amount of dollars in any fiscal year directly from the federal government. And it requires extended audit procedures, which would cost more for the audit. But that guidance has not come down yet. And the draft budget will be distributed to council at its next meeting. And the budget workshop is scheduled for May 18th.
Okay, and basically, the shortfall in the revenues is COVID-related, most of it?
For HUR, yes.
Right, okay. Any comments, questions for Rebecca? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I know Jade is not here today. Do we have anything for planning?
So, for planning and zoning, last month, there was just one item on the agenda, and that was the architectural review for the pub. And they did receive that positive recommendation on that. And then this month, we just have one item on the agenda, and it's the boundary line adjustment plan for the property that we're purchasing on Van Wert Lane.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, comments, questions? Thank you. And police report, everyone should have received a copy of that. And Corporal Nelson with us? Oh, there she is. Anything you'd like to add?
No. Well, tomorrow starts the new traffic pattern.
It's delayed till Wednesday, so I tried to catch you before the meeting.
Wait till Wednesday now, but the sign board is up.
And that's because of the new traffic pattern we're doing, one way off of Washington onto Park Avenue, and the new stop signs coming up. Okay. Any comments, questions for Kristi? Okay. And Michelle, let's get to town administrators' report, please.
So, if you can skip the first item until 4:15, the public hearing is scheduled at 4:15.
Okay.
So, we can do quickly the second item, and then I can go ahead and go over the first item.
Okay.
The second item on my agenda is introduce ordinance number 206, Streets and Sidewalks. This is just a tax amendment. We will hold the public hearing next month on this subject. We will be talking about it more in depth, which is outdoor seating. And this is just to start the process for getting some guidelines for any permanent structures for outdoor seating or temporary structures. And then it will come back through the council, and we are going to be coming up with some guidelines for that. So, this just kind of is the initial introduction, and then we'll be holding a public hearing next month on that. And then at 4:15, we have a public hearing, so I can just kind of go ahead and cover the lead up to that if you want.
Yeah, might as well.
So, this will be a public hearing for ordinance number 207, sale and purchase of real property. And last month, we had a public hearing on the same subject regarding possible land transfers from the town and the private owner of Tudor Hall Farm. The properties that are being transferred from the town to the owner were declared as surplus property at last month's public hearing by that ordinance. The second public hearing that will, if approved, move the process forward for the sale and purchase of equal land swaps totaling 39.1 acres, plus or minus. Following the public hearing, the entire package goes to the state to be reviewed by Department of Natural Resources and several other agencies. It has to be approved by the state. There were two appraisals done on all the parcels, and I'll go into detail once we're in the public hearing about the map for the parcels. There is a significant history to the Tudor Hall project, and you didn't receive an overall overview of the historical timeline. And the most significant thing, I guess, that affects this would be the town obtained ownership of 239 acres of the 400-acre farm in January of 2000 through program open space. The deed restrictions on those properties are that they will remain for outdoor public recreation and open space, and they require a like valued land to be provided to remove that restriction. So, that's the process we've been working through with the owner. The original concept plan was developed around a golf course, so the parcels are very odd shaped and not really conducive when there's not a golf course there, to accomplish what the goals of the town are for that property as well as the developer. So, we've been working with the owner of the private portions to modify the parcel layout and to maximize the long-term planning and development goals of the town. The proposed map was in your packet, and we also had it last month for presentation in the public hearing. And I will review the different parcels and what the different colors mean on that map. But they will be equal property that we're giving up and equal property that we're gaining back. So, everybody ends up with the same amount of land, and the land is all within that same development.
Okay. It's not quite 4:15 yet, so.
Can you probably go ahead and go over the map?
Let's go say you want to.
So, you all have a copy in your. So, the light green is what the town owns currently, and the light orangey pink color is what the private developer owns currently. And then the darker green is what the private developer owns right now, but is proposing to give to the town. And the dark orange is the property that the private owner would get from the town. So, all in all, it equals the 39.1 acres that we're giving up and 39.1 acres that we're getting. It does end up giving us the entire waterfront. We already owned all but what we call parcel K, which will be all the way from the wharf out to the winery. So, the public will have ownership of the entire waterfront all along there. And there was one little piece that we talked about before we did the public hearing last month. There was a question, we didn't want to give up a parcel down near the waterfront. We wanted to keep 300 feet back. And so, we were able to come to an agreement to change out that parcel. So, that's indicated on this map.
Okay, I'll do that 4:15, so I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to close the regular meeting and open up the public hearing.
I move to close the regular meeting and open up the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, so as I described what we would be giving up and what we would be gaining, and we will end up with still 238.94 acres. It has been surveyed. It has been appraised by two different appraisals to show that they're equal value. And the public hearing was advertised in the County Times, and to date, I've had a couple of questions, but we have received no comments about it.
Yeah, the only comment that I got, they wanted to make sure we were getting this parcel K as part of the transfer, which we are, so.
And just as a reminder, we did hire Torte Gallus, the planners, the large planning firm, to review this before we moved forward, to make sure that there wasn't anything we were missing and that we would be able to accomplish our downtown plan and waterfront plan and weren't hurting anything publicly with this land transfer.
Okay, I'll go ahead and ask the public, anyone in the attendance have any comments, questions? No? Okay. We can close the public hearing and go back to the regular meeting. Someone cares to make that motion?
I move to close the public hearing and go back to the regular meeting.
I'll second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so the action today would be for ordinance number 207, the sale of surplus property and the acquisition of a like number of acres. And because it was introduced last month and we have a public hearing today, you are able to take action on it today, unless there's any questions. Once we have this done today, then we'll finalize the packet that goes to the state, and everything wouldn't, the sale wouldn't happen until after the state approves it, which could take a few months.
I was gonna say, do we know how long that takes?
Probably several months.
Yeah.
Especially now.
Yeah, right.
All right, well, I move to approve ordinance number 207, sale of surplus property plus acquisition of real property, each containing 39.100 acres, more or less, for the Tudor Hall Farm development.
I'll second.
Motion in second, comments, questions?
Just, okay.
I was just gonna say, I do really like that we're not going to have all the waterfront. I think that was agreed.
Sure.
Sorry.
Nope, nope, I agree to that. Just a quick reminder for me, parcel K, that's right behind the town, down at the wharf.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's the dark green, right there by the town.
No, this is good, it's critical to our development downtown.
With all the fingers to the golf course, just it makes sense not to do the land swap, so.
And we'll be able to really grid it out like we wanted and connect the streets that we already have existing. I think this will be a better layout for sure. And definitely being able to continue the boardwalk, hopefully, from the wharf all the way out and have public access to all the waterfront is a really important piece of the waterfront plan.
Yeah, connectivity is extremely important. All right, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Anyone care to make a motion?
I think.
Oh, we did? Okay, all right, okay, there was no comments. Okay, no more comments. Yes. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Okay. Move on to my report. Ladies, would you have any questions for the council during the meeting? They won't be with us right after the meeting, so, but, okay, great. I'll move on to the LBA report, then.
Maggie, I'm Ellen Morris from the LBA. And this month, I wanted to bring one of our members, Maggie Johnson, who is with Cona. She's with Berkshire Hathaway. And you hear a lot about the businesses that are very tourist-facing, but you don't always hear so much about the service-oriented businesses. So, I wanted to give Maggie the opportunity to introduce herself and her business and talk a little bit about why she's in Lenartown. And, you know, just let maybe the town council needs to know about her. Great, it's yours.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to come this afternoon. Again, my name is Maggie Johnson, and I'm a real estate agent with Berkshire Hathaway Home Services, the McNallys Group Properties. About a year and a half ago, I was made ambassador to the Lenartown Business Association to represent my office. During that time, I saw so many and have seen so many exciting changes taking place here in Lenartown. I just, I feel like I need to be a part of that. I watched businesses, shops, and restaurants open, even when we didn't think that would ever happen. I watched the members of the association work long and hard to make this a better place. So, I'm here tonight just to ask you all for your continued support of the association and its future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, don't really have anything else from my report. We'll move on to the council.
Joe, go ahead.
Oh. Oh, Joe? Did you want to say something from?
Well, we're gonna talk about the outdoor seating.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So, we've had a request, and I think we have two restaurants, three restaurants here, actually, I told you. The request to open back up outdoor seating for those who took it down for the winter. Even though the governor has relaxed the guidelines, still having the social distancing, you can't have, you're pretty much at 50% still inside. Also, I think that people have come to expect the outdoor seating. They enjoy it. I think it was something that we were able to offer that a lot of places weren't. So, they would like to continue that, and I think we need to figure out exactly how we're going to do that. And to, I did talk to Old Town, the Old Town Cafe today. They are not interested in opening up additional seating, but I know Joe was interested. Antoinette's has had theirs all during the season. Social has the two parking spaces as well. And then, I don't know if you're, Mike, you're planning on not using the extra seating?
You're thinking?
You're thinking about possibly not discontinuing it, so. We would like to request to let, you know, the businesses put their seating back out there. How soon are you thinking, Joe?
We're heading into some good weather, so the sooner the better.
Soon as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're all kind of, you know, in agreement to allow that to happen. We are trying to come up with some guidelines, but, you know, we'll certainly work with you on that. And I think we would like to find some other types of barriers if we could, just to.
And I have done some research, but need to try to work through that a little bit if they need to do it sooner. And I think the idea, at least with the orange barricades, is you wanted the businesses to support their own barricades. So, I can work through the company to get additional barricades, and that Antoinette's will take over theirs, and we can get however many we need for you temporarily to use the orange barricades until we can figure out exactly what we want to do uniformly.
Yeah, that'd be good. And whatever you guys decide, we're on board. I mean, it's invaluable, that space to us, so just let us know.
Which seating, are we talking about the REX? Yeah, I didn't think anyone took their seating down, or outdoor seating.
The REX took, they had a tent for a while, and they had outdoor seating in.
They had it out in the parking.
In January, they gave it up.
So, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, I was confused.
Taking a few more parking spaces again, so.
So, but Old Town Cafe is not interested at this time. The pub has kept theirs, but they're also building outdoor seating attached to their restaurant. And so, they will eventually be taking down the tent once that's finished. So, it's really at this time, I guess, Antoinette's would continue, and the REX would add seating, and Social would continue.
With how many spaces did they have? Joe, how many spaces did you have last time?
With the Old Town next to us, I think we had combined eight spaces. And then we ended up giving them two to our right. So, I think we were six or seven one down the line, but.
In the original plan, we had four for you originally. And then we ended up, when the seating had to be spread out more, I think it was, but, I mean, are you able to work with four or?
Four would be good. Five would be better.
Well, my question to you guys is, I mean, have you had any adverse effect from the people not being able to park in front of your business? Is that?
I think last summer was a great litmus test for it, and people would walk. I mean, all our outdoor seating was full, and I think that's one of the busier summers we've had in terms of, you know, the dog days of summer, us competing against Solomons, and town looked great, and everybody had umbrellas up, and people would go a few blocks and park and walk down.
Have more complaints without less, not more seating than less.
I'm glad to hear that.
We haven't really in here either received parking complaints. And I think what we're seeing is people coming here specifically because of that, is what it seems.
I think a couple of the businesses that aren't restaurants are concerned that, you know, right in front of their businesses. So, we'll work with you on that, so.
Sounds good.
There's also a difference, too, in, you know, parking spaces are all different sizes, too. I would maybe look into more of a square footage kind of thing, too, as far as.
Especially because they're on a slant as well.
Yeah, some are on slants, some are parallel parking spots, like, just like, for instance, I have two spots. So, if you were to give me four, four of my type of spots, I might have the whole time with street and I'd say.
Doesn't work.
Yeah.
Don't get any ideas.
No. Okay, any other comments on that? Okay. All right, let's move on to council reports. Tyler, events?
All right. So, the town of Lenartown is going to be partnering with Visit St. Mary's on future marketing campaigns to highlight the local businesses and tourist attractions. So, the current plan is for media releases, print, online, and social media ads featuring virtual upcoming events. Good news bullet here is that increased request and utilization of the Lenartown Wharf and Port of Lenartown Winery for weddings and private events. So, the wharf has been booked for the return of Coastal Arts Market, Sunrise Yoga at the wharf, and Roots Up &amp; Fitness, and then other outdoor events. Weekly group fitness classes are being reserved. We're working with the North End Gallery to present a series of informative and dynamic art classes for Lenartown Learn and Share Online. These will be free online classes, and they just started on April 5th. And it's on visitlenartownmaryland.com/NorthEndGallery. The upcoming Earth Day virtual celebration is going to be, is that this Sunday, April 18th? Yeah. At 4:30 PM. So, the plans will be the Reptile World Show and Birds of Prey exhibit, Watermen and Nature tours, and that'll be done on visitlenartownmaryland.com/EarthDay. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Nick, Community Development and Planning?
All right, thank you, Mayor. I really don't have much. We had 23 permits and 18 UMs completed last month, so busy, but things are moving right along. Great. And then I just want to give a quick shout out to Penn Hanson Sierra Club, the tree plant yesterday was in with a 10. We're just weather, couldn't have been a better day for it.
Good.
It was huge turnout, so it's great. So, I just want to thank them for providing the trees. It was a great program.
Good.
That's all I have.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry I missed, I was out of town, but, okay.
So, we have 24 trees went into Port of Lenartown and six at the wharf. Bill Wood had gone out and placed them where he thought they would be best. I went Sunday morning before they got there and moved a couple, told Bill. But anyway, I thought they'd look nice.
They're big trees, right? Are they like 60? Yeah, so not little, little.
Yeah, they're a good size.
Good, that's wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Krista, utilities?
I don't have a lot to report on utilities. I'll have to thank the staff again for all the work with the breaks and things we've had going on. It's not been a good year for anybody. And also, the Maryland 5 widening is still obviously going on, so just make sure everybody's careful when you're driving through there. It's a little touch and go sometimes, so.
We did have a meeting with several of the state highway reps, and they gave us an updated schedule, and it should be completed by the end of this year.
Oh, great.
Hopefully, earlier in the fall.
Yes, hopefully.
But they did go out and re-strive, and they have been having flaggers out there when there's things going on on Abel Street, so they seem to be a little bit more on top of it.
I know that turn lane into Clark's Rest is greatly missed, man.
Oh, yes.
We had a long conversation about that with them, but.
You know, with the light, trying to get the light there, and they're still saying, we've got to do a traffic study.
Is that a light?
Nope.
Yeah, we need to wait till we have the wires.
Yeah.
We just don't have it at this point.
Yeah, even though we had 97 accidents in that section last year. Yep.
Is the Tudor, sorry, is the Tudor Hall going to be more justification if?
Yeah, that will actually give us the movements. It's really not, it's about the turn, left turns, so.
So, right now, it's just turns into Clark's Rest. So, that's what they look at, the number of turns.
And they all add up. So, once that. So, once that is there, there'll be a lot more left turns, and they'll be able to, the numbers will probably be there pretty quickly. Hopefully before.
Yep. Okay, Mary, business development and, or Jay, Southern Maryland Municipal Association.
Mayor, thank you. So, our meeting and retreat for the Maryland Municipal League is scheduled for April 24th. That's on the Eastern Shore, Kent Island. So, I know some are going in person, some are doing it virtual. I'm gonna be doing it virtual, so I plan on attending. And also, this week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So, if you see a 911 dispatcher, be sure to thank them. And also this week, the same week they share, is Animal Control Appreciation Week. So, if you see an animal control officer, be sure to thank them. And lastly, I'm definitely looking forward to the outdoor seating in town. Just last year, I think it looked great. It gave you that hometown feel, so, small-town charm feeling, so I'm looking forward to it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, small business, business development and retention?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I feel like I say this every season, but, oh my gosh, Lenertown is so beautiful in the spring to drive through and see all the flowers and see the flowering trees. I just love being here, and I agree with Jay. I'm so excited. I'm glad the restaurants are here to talk about the outdoor seating. I hope we can help them do whatever we can do to keep that going for them, definitely support them. And I do have a question for the scouts that are here. Do you guys know who Maldire is? Have you been to see the Maldire Rock?
No.
Do you know where that is? You do? When we say the only sort of house called. I can't remember. You want to go? Yeah? You want to tell me? So, I have to tell you a funny story. So, recently, they moved the Maldire Rock from the old jail over to Tudor Hall. And my garage door has been going up and down. And about two weeks ago, my father-in-law, who used to be the judge here in St. Mary's County, he was in Florida, and he called me up, and he said, I figured out the fact of your garage door. I said, that's amazing from Florida. Are you kidding me? He goes, it's Maldire. She's happy she got moved. And so, I think she's been hanging out in my garage in the hot tub. So, you know, if y'all go over to the rock, please tell her to stay at the rock and not come down and bother me anymore. Very disconcerting that she's going up and down. So, but please, the Maldire, it's a cool, it's a cool story. If you haven't been over there, go read the plaque. It's just a really, really neat story.
Sure it's not one of the kids trying to sneak back into the house around the bank.
I've been watching, I've been watching that with my car. I was like, girl, I said, what is going on? It's at the end of the hill. There's nothing else down there. Must be Maldire hanging out, so. But welcome, guys. Welcome scout. I'm glad to see you. And that's it.
That it? Okay. Anybody else have anything for the good of the town? Okay. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.